Swing and a miss. Good evening and welcome to the June 20th meeting of the Oyster River School Board. We will begin the meeting with the approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Brian, in a second. Denise, any changes to the agenda? Okay, all in favor? Seven in favor. At this time, we'll take anyone that is here for a public comment. Please remember to state your name and where you're from.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. I just wanted to say it's your last meeting with Dr. Morse, how much I appreciated watching the board function and get their job done over the last dozen years. I remember when Jim came, lunch program was just sort of a minor disarray and he hired someone and next thing we knew, we had the best lunch program around. I can remember that the high school, after the renovation, was never properly commissioned and we didn't know how much we were going to save. Apparently, Dr. Morse saved 100 and a quarter, $1,000. That would pay for a whole teacher and then some maybe. So things have gone pretty well. I want to say that I'm so glad that we could... Oh, yes. And lo and behold, in a couple of years, I met Mr. Edelblut because Dr. Morse had been appointed Superintendent of the Year. And so we were getting off to a really good start. Matter of fact, that was going to be a hard act to follow, you know, for the second act. But Jim did it. With the new school, we were overdue, in my opinion, of knocking that old school down. I can't believe that we built what we have for here for 50 million. Most other places, it would cost quite a bit more. And the job was done absolutely perfectly right from the vote by the electorate of 76% which is virtually unheard of in school districts between the people that want to save money and the people that don't. Getting 76% for a project, I would like to suspect that is probably the most percentage we've gotten and anyone's gotten in 15 years. Maybe more because we had to drop from 66% down to 60 and they still can't get it. 60% projects passed. So I'm just hoping that you people take your issues head on, deal with them honestly, and you look back on the last 12 years as a good example of something to live up to. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Michael Williams from Madbury. I'm a district parent and former school board member and current district moderator. It all feels very full circle. 11 years ago, as you know, we were talking about over enrollment at Moheramit and what got me involved in school governance was our lack of process and abrupt decision-making we had to do literally a few days before school opened to try to figure out where the kindergartners were going to go. So congratulations and thank you for making a clear and workable decision at your last meeting so that students and families and staff all have the summer to work through what that means and ensure a smooth opening to school in the fall. But really, why I'm here is about the other part of your conversation at your last meeting about the potential for new construction at both Moheramit and Mastway. And I want to encourage you to think very broadly about what that could mean. And so, you know, you're going to be hopefully working on a new strategic plan very soon with a new superintendent and there is really a tremendous opportunity to rethink not just the amount of space we have at our elementary school buildings, but also our entire elementary program. So there's a number of things that we talked about over the years that we couldn't really tackle piecemeal, one at a time, that this is the kind of opportunity to really go after. And so I'm talking about things like where does the social emotional learning program fit into the classroom day? Where does the world language, the potential for world language program, fit into our elementary curriculum? We know that we have one of the shortest elementary school days of any of our peer districts in New Hampshire. Not that we should have a longer school day to cram more into it, but a longer school day might offer a little bit more relaxed approach to lunch and recess and more transition time between different activities. And as you alluded to last week, is it time to think about dividing our elementary schools not by geography, but by grade level? And this is an opportunity to make that work and I think there are some things we could do from a process perspective to ensure that we don't lose the small school feel that we have today at both Mastway and Moheramit. There's a lot more I could say about all of those things, but not in three minutes. So just, I hope you view that as an opportunity and not as simply a math equation of how many students and how many classrooms and how many teachers at each building. So beyond that, I just want to, I want to thank Dr. Morse for your support of me and my children. That kindergartner 11 years ago is a successful and rising high school junior for next year and for our entire district and I want to wish you all the best in your much more flexible endeavors ahead. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else for public comment? Okay. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes. At this time, we have only our minutes from the June 5 regular school board meeting, which was the first Wednesday in June. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes? Denise?
Make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for June 5.
Okay. In a second, Renee. Are there any corrections that need to be made? Denise?
Yes, on page three, the last paragraph, I know that inflation has gotten pretty high, but I really don't think that our proposed or possible expansion to Moheramit would cost $3 billion. It should be $3 million. And it's there twice. There's, it's, 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 well, it's actually $6 billion after that. So it says a cost of $3 billion or a six classroom tower at the cost of $6 billion. Both of those should say million.
Excellent. Any other corrections? Brian?
I believe it's on the top of page five. My motion, it says Brian Cisneros made a motion to give the principal of Moheramit authority to decide what encore goes into the open area. Actually, it was the, it was the motion was to keep the kids, the 17 kids that are affected at Moheramit and to give the principal authority to decide what encore goes into the open area. That's it.
Okay. Anyone else? Heather?
Sorry, I shifted off. On page three, it says bandpalooza. That's bandapalooza. That's a tiny one. On page five, under the NHSBA, it says states recall for resolutions. It should be associations call for resolutions. And then this one I need some help with from you all. So on page four, where we were talking about moving to the Princeton model, it's the paragraph that starts with Denise. It says, "Based on teachers, parents, and research, David said he does not favor that model as a solution." I would like to change that to David stated that the transition time required would be inadequate to successfully plan and execute a move to the Princeton model. That's how I heard what he said. I just want to confirm that with others.
I would agree with that. Yeah.
Well, but yeah, he did say he does not favor that model as a solution.
For the reason she said though.
You can add that in, but I don't want to change that subject, that sentence because he did say that.
He said he does not favor it.
He does not favor that model as a solution. So I would agree that that is correct. I just wouldn't probably add it.
Instead of changing it completely? Okay. Any other corrections? Okay. Seven in favor and none opposed. And microphone and training for me. We will move to district announcements.
Hi, everyone. Rachel Blansett, DIJ Director for the District. It's been a minute since I've been up here, so I have a few announcements for you all. First one, the most exciting one, the divisive concepts law, better known as HB2, has been declared unconstitutional, which is amazing because now we can finally do this work without fear. Both of the statewide DIJ director student conferences that we put on in Manchester, so at Manchester Community College, we held an Ignite Student Empowerment Conference and then also a Flourish and Thrive LGBTQ+ Student Retreat. And it honestly went way better than expected, especially for our first time putting these on. We did do some feedback surveys and over 89% said that they would want to attend Ignite and Flourish and Thrive again. The others stated maybe and no one voted no. So I take that as a win. DIJ competencies, I'm currently working on drafting them and work getting a group of teachers to help design and review them and hopefully lead this work in their building. So I've done some outreach to a group of teachers. We're planning on meeting in early August to kind of do like a day working document kind of retreat thing. So I'll be working on kind of drafting and refining some of those to bring to that August meeting with the teachers so we can work through it. On the presentation front, I have successfully presented to all season coaches this year on sports bias. So how to address it, what to look out for, what does support look like? So that was for both season coaches and then the incoming fall coaches that are happening for next year. So that happened. And then also, UDL 101 presentations have been given to each building. So that's been good. You all will get a snippet of it today. And then we had the last CIJ community group meeting of the year on Monday, May 20. Dr. Robert Schaps joined for that group meeting and so it gave the group a chance to meet with him and I'm looking forward to the work next year. And we'll be restarting our meetings again in late September 2024. And that's about it. Any questions for me? Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other district reports? Okay. We'll move on to board reports.
Graduation was lovely. The rain held off. It was a successful evening and I love seeing the smiles on the faces of the seniors. I extra love watching them all try to figure out stopping to get their picture taken. That is maybe my favorite part, but it was really fantastic.
So years ago, I watched a, I forget where the story was, or a documentary or a TV show on John Williams and how he conducts an orchestra. And the important thing about a conductor is a conductor makes sure the timing is correct. Everyone's on the same page. Everyone's moving at the same pace and everybody comes in when they're supposed to and goes out when they're supposed to. One thing I thought about that was how a superintendent operates like that. He makes, he's the conductor of the orchestra. And what he does, he makes sure people come in and out at the right time. He makes sure timing is right. Everything happens when it's supposed to happen. And when I look back on the 12 years that Dr. Morse has been here, I think of him as the, could basically been the conductor of this, of this district. And not once has he ever said, "It was because of me." It's always because it was because of everybody that works for him. And that just says a lot. And the same thing with conductors, basically it's about the music. It's not about the conductor. And that really kind of ties up and explains and really, really says how Jim's operated over the last 12 years here at the district. So I know it's your last meeting. I know we've said a lot of things a lot of times, but you're the best conductor this district has probably ever had and it's going to be tough to replace you, but you, you are, we are left in very good hands. You've left us with a great foundation and a great team to work with as you leave. You put us in a great position and like Bill said earlier, you know, we've come a long way in 12 years. So thank you for everything you've done and we will miss you when you're gone, but don't go too far. Come back and visit.
I will just say, echo everything Brian said, but I also find that Dr. Morse, just in terms of how you inspired people so that they, they would feel like they could do the things that you, they believe that they could do the things that you said they could do. And that's how we got so many things done in this district because you inspired people and you said, "Yes, we can do these things." And we did them. So thank you so much. And like Brian said, I hope you won't be too much of a stranger. Thank you.
Okay. I'll just finish by saying you and I came into this district at the exact same time and we moved here exactly for the reputation that this district had and got much, much more than what we were expecting because of all the work that you've put in. Your humility, your grace, your professionalism is just a tremendous example for the whole district to follow and we're going to miss you and good luck.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay. Now give us a report, please.
So I'm going to pick up Suzanne's piece tonight, just largely because she's got some issues that she's dealing with. She never misses a board meeting, so you can imagine that the importance of the issue that would take her away. So one of, one of the final presentations of the school year that we committed to is a presentation on universal design for learning. Rachel has done presentations to our staff, to our administrators, and I thought we could close out the year by laying that foundation for all of you. So I'd invite Rachel to come up and do the presentation on universal design for learning.
Oh, awesome. I am going to pass out these folders to you all real quick. You don't have to look at them right now, but they just have some helpful resources to, to guide us through.
To keep or to give back?
Thank you, Rachel.
Okay. So Rachel Blansett, DIJ Director for the District. This is kind of a crash course on UDL 101. I am also still learning about UDL myself, so I am not like the end-all, be-all expert, but I have had some experience with UDL. So this is going to be kind of just an overview of what I've presented to the teachers to kind of give them tangible framework of like, what are the UDL principles? What could this look like and what does this mean for you? So I will describe the function and main principles outlined in UDL, illustrate how this is a proactive framework to enhance learning. And also, we might not perform a lesson plan comparison, but I have two lesson plans in your packet that I think it still would be good to look over and notice the differences between just a regular template and what UDL could look like. Some disclaimers. I think UDL is not an end-all, be-all to classroom teaching, but it is a very helpful framework. And I think even though it's a proactive framework, it actually, in the long run, can make teaching easier for teachers in terms of thinking ahead, thinking about inherent variation in the classroom versus like maybe just like forming lessons and then having to adapt as you go. This is meant to spark your curiosity for further research, inquiry, and practice. A lot of our teachers are actually already incorporating some of these practices into their own teaching pedagogy, either knowingly or unknowingly. And then be willing to accept non-closure. So I'm sure that you all will have many great questions at the end of this because UDL is an expansive framework and be open to, we might not be able to get to all of it today. So we'll start with the end of average. So if I were to ask you, what's like a topic or area you would consider yourself an expert or highly skilled, because some people get nervous around the term expert, what would it be? So take a few minutes, think silently by yourself. It could be literally anything. You could be a master of walking. Like, does everyone have an idea of what they would consider themselves like highly skilled or have expertise in? Okay. Now, what would be the best way for you to communicate or express that expertise? And what would be the hardest? So typically, I'll have folks like raise their hand. It's probably going to, we might not see a lot of overlap because it's a small group, but typically with a large group, I see some trends. So who would say like taking a test would be like, "Yes, I can ace it. I can show you I know this. This is my jam." Yeah, that tends to be it. We might get a couple, a couple. How about a large group presentation? Who thrives at like public speaking? Okay, a few. What about like writing? So an essay, article, publication? Okay, we have some, some writers over here. Presenting to peers or colleagues? A few. What about like oral? So like audio recording, podcasts, anything like that? And then a casual conversation? I think most folks feel very skilled at that. So we all have different strengths and needs when it comes to our learning and showcasing our knowledge and skill sets. So then, why do we shape our classroom lessons in environments in ways that often only allow students to express their learning in one way? Right? So writing an essay, creating a presentation, having really rigid guidelines of this is the end product that you must present. Right? So Dr. Todd Rose, he's a Harvard professor. He wrote the book, "The End of Average." And in this book, he talks about the jagged profile, which outlines that too often, we assess learners based on statistical average and do not unpack the innate variations of learning for each student. Dr. Rose talks about designing to the edges, meaning for those who have strengths in certain areas, those who meet the average, and for those who have needs. Right? So this is kind of just like a example profile. I'll go to the next slide in a second and it'll make a little bit more sense, but sometimes we have a habit of if a student might be struggling in one area or maybe even a couple areas, sometimes we unconsciously label them as like they just need support in all areas or they're just kind of like failing, you know? When actually, they could be meeting the average or they could actually have strengths and skills in so many other facets, but maybe we're not presenting the information or allowing them to express their knowledge in a way that would show that they have strength in that area. Right? So in thinking about designing to the edges, right? So this is just like a draft kind of learner profile, but let's say someone needs support, obviously on here in like flexible thinking, but might be doing really well in their processing, memory, they have great visual memory, verbal memory, things of that nature. So there's different strengths that students might be excelling at that maybe we're not honing into or keying into based on how we shape our lessons, shape our curriculum, and things of that nature. Right? And I think even within this, it kind of allows for a more collaborative dynamic between learner and teacher to think through like, how do I best learn and how do I best teach to support you in that learning? Right? And sometimes I think just by nature of society and our school system and stuff like that, sometimes we're not really taught, especially for kids, how they like to learn. And so UDL can really help adopt this framework in terms of keying into what do you really like to do? How do you really excel? And really gauging with them what that could be. So the question then becomes, how do we design to the edges? Right? That's where UDL comes in. Right? So I'm going to ask some folks, what are some examples of universal designs? And this doesn't have to be specific to universal design for learning, but just any universal design that you've heard of or seen. Exactly. Ramps are a big one. What about anyone else? Yep. Curb cutouts, absolutely.
Stairs.
Well, stairs, maybe not, because it doesn't allow for everyone to use the stairs. So that's when a ramp would come in. Right? So when you think about a universal design, it's kind of like, like even with a curb cut, it allows, most people immediately think like folks who use a wheelchair, but also, I don't know if you've ever been in this position, but I've had to walk with my luggage down the sidewalk and a curb cut comes, it comes in handy. Right? Or even parents with strollers, stuff like that. Right? So it kind of benefits everyone. Yeah, absolutely. Closed caption could, could potentially be one. Not sure. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. There's also, I think, the door things when you wave and then the door opens. Right? So we have like ideas of different universal designs. Right? There's curb cuts, step-free entries, levers, wide doorways. And so a lot of universal design has started in architectural, structural design and then later adapted to, well, what about learning? What about the classroom? Like, there's got to be ways that we can also create universal frameworks to help better engage students. Right? So UDL, and this is a long definition, but I think it really grounds us into what it is. So it's an approach to teaching and learning that gives all students equal opportunity to succeed. UDL guides the design of learning experiences to proactively meet the needs of all learners. When you use UDL, you assume that the barriers to learning are in the design of the environment, not in the student. UDL is based on brain science and evidence-based educational practices and it also leverages the power of digital technology. So that's a lot there. Does anything stand out to anyone about UDL? The definition?
Renee, just use your microphone. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah. I like the barriers are in the design of the environment, not in the student bit.
Yeah, absolutely. So thinking about how we can continue to better our practices in order to engage students and to have them be successful and honestly, partake in their own learning experience. Right? So when we think about universal design for learning, as we said, it's like a ramp or a curb cut. I think it's important to think about this is a process and not an end goal. So I try to remind teachers because some, some folks, you know, could go through this or any UDL presentation and be like, "Oh, my gosh, tomorrow I have to adapt all of my lesson plans to UDL." Right? We're definitely not asking that. I think this is a tool. This is a framework. This is something just useful to have and to start to... to start to think about. And it's something that we're going to continue to adapt and learn and grow. So a huge part of UDL is also reflection, right? So you might do a UDL lesson plan that you designed, and then afterwards, you have to take some time to reflect to be like, what went well? What didn't go well? What would I adapt next time? And then, as we know, we have different sets of students every year, and so you're going to constantly have to adapt as you go, right? So it's a continuous process that you're going to continue to practice. I think it's also important to note that it's not the same as differentiation, right? So in thinking about, UDL is proactive. So differentiation, I would say, is a little reactive at, at some points, unless folks have an accommodation or something listed that they need. Typically, let's say that a student might be struggling, but they don't meet the criteria for an IEP. They're still sometimes expected to adapt to that lesson in order to succeed, right?
So I guess I'm just trying to understand this a little bit. If, if there's a teacher, say, who gives students different, say that there's a particular unit that they're studying, but gives students different options in terms of how they demonstrate their learning, is that differentiation or is that universal design? Like if it's like, oh, you can do, you know, this present, like, sort of like at the beginning, like you can do a presentation, you can write a paper, you can, you know, do these different things. Would that be differentiation or universal design?
I would say that could be a part of universal design. And I will say that differentiation is not completely devoid from universal design. But I would say that universal design is not only thinking about, oh, I'm going to offer these different options, I'm also going to think about the ways that they're going to present that information, how we're going to engage in that topic. It's kind of like a, more than just, oh, if this happens, or I'm going to just present different options. Or let's say, you know, you create a lesson that's like, everyone write an essay. And then you don't allow for any other avenue outside of that, unless there's an IEP, or if someone maybe is flexible and elects to offer a different option. But I think that would be more differentiation than coming into the environment thinking, well, I have some folks that maybe struggle with writing essays, so is there a way that I can adapt and allow them several drafts, the drafts where they do like oral text, what is it, voice to text, or stuff like that, right? So I think there's different options, and you kind of help guide them through that versus, I have an idea for an overall lesson plan, and we're just going to adapt as we go. Does that make sense? And so that goes to the last point, so assuming inherent variation, right? So every year, you are going to have different learners, but I think also not to feel overwhelming, because many times, we do see similar trends of what learners need throughout the classroom, right? So you might see similar supports come up again and again, depending on your lessons, depending on the class. And so you might come in with a mindset of like, oh, I'm probably already going to have some learners who might need support in this way, or this way, because I've seen it before. And so you already coming to the class with resources to help support that. Does that make sense? So here are just a couple examples of how UDL can be used in the classroom, and this is by no means like exhaustive at all. But typically, you know, many have already used some of these options or embed these examples into their practices. I don't know if anyone else remembers, PEMDAS, please excuse my dear Aunt Sally, I don't know if that's like out of the, I haven't, I haven't used it much, but yeah, that is a form of UDL, right? I think a lot of things that we use to help memorize information, whether that's acronyms, whether that's mnemonics, whether that's using certain images to help, not trigger, but think of a memory or something like that, all of those are examples of UDL. So who's seen this picture? I'm sure like everyone's seen it, right? Right. So equity versus equality. Does anyone want to explain to me the difference between equity and equality?
Equity is everyone gets what they need, and equality is sort of everyone gets the same thing. So when we think about equity, what I need to start might be different than what you need to start. So how do we both start at the same spot? That would be the equity piece, what I need. And this is not equitable, this fence.
Exactly, right. So obviously, the first image is an example of equality, everyone's getting the same thing. And then the second image is, you know, folks are getting what they need to see over the fence. But no one asks why there's a fence in the first place, right? Like, why, why is there a barrier anyway? So universal design kind of acts as that fence by thinking proactively about the needs of your learners in the classroom to break down those barriers that might come up. So UDL has some common elements, and they all wrap around building expert learning for all. So at the beginning of any lesson, all learners should know the goal. So what is the goal of this lesson? What are they trying to accomplish? What is happening? Offering intentional, flexible options for all students to use, whether that's like, we're going to offer different ways you can read a book, we're going to offer different ways that you can participate in writing an essay, or different ways to participate in playtime, or what have you, right? Students building and internalizing their own learning, that's really embedded in UDL, is really having students engage and be a participatory person in their own learning. And then student access to resources from the start of the lesson. So this is really important, because I think that goes back to the proactive nature of UDL. So you're already thinking through, oh, I have this lesson that I want to do, this is the goal of the lesson. In the past, I've seen maybe some students have challenges in certain areas, so I want to provide certain resources to help them navigate those challenges, or to even just navigate different ways of reaching that goal. So this is where, oh, and I see some of you all have already pulled it out, your folder comes in handy. And so it has the universal design guidelines. So there's three main principles. And the first one is providing multiple means of engagement, right? So this is asking, how can I engage all students in my class? So some questions to ask is like, in what ways do I give students choice and autonomy? How do I make learning relevant to student needs and wants? In what ways is my classroom accepting and supportive of all students? So I think that's a big one as well. A lot of our teachers have already engaged in some of these elements, so student interest surveys, choice menus to work towards goals. I think a big one is also seating arrangements. So thinking through like how you're seating the classroom so people engage. Are people more solitary learners, or like to work more solo? You know, I've worked with some teachers that are like, you know, this year, my students are a bit more like quiet, they internally process, so you might adapt like your classroom to allow for more of that internal processing. So things of that nature, right? So how are, how am I thinking about how I'm going to get all students engaged in the lesson? Secondly, it's thinking about representation, right? So providing multiple means of representation. How can you present this information in ways that reach all learners? So have we considered options for how printed text, pictures, and charts are displayed? What options do we provide for students who need support engaging with text and/or with auditory learning? Some examples could be showing images instead of words, right? Using relevant content and videos and audio. I think that's something really big. Thinking about how can I relate this to the student experience? How can they see themselves in this lesson? Partner reading, audiobooks, offering different books to use to participate in. So all of those things. And I would say that typically, I think faculty have a way easier time doing engagement and representation. And then our last one will be action and expression. And this is where it kind of gets a little murkier. So how can I offer purposeful options for students to show what they know? So when can I provide flexibility with timing and pacing? Sometimes this can happen, I think sometimes we think, oh, unless they have an IEP, we can't offer like extra timing, or extra pacing, or stuff like that, right? Flexibility in how this looks. Have I considered methods aside from paper and pencil tasks for students to show what they know, right? That's where the auditory comes in. That's where maybe presenting knowledge by talking through with you how you got that answer, things of that nature. Am I providing students access to assistive technology, right? So some examples could be calendars or checklists, allowing students to present information in a variety of formats. I think through, there was an example that a teacher gave of like, you know, I, they were like, I had a student who was really struggling with showing their work for a math problem, right? But they could talk through with me how they got their answer, right? And so the teacher's like, I know that they know this, but they just struggle showing it on paper, right? And so I do think there's elements where it's like, we can engage with learners differently to know, to know that they know what they know, you know? That was a lot. But, so, you know, in a UDL environment, students will rarely do the same task in the same way at the same time. The flexible options will differ across developmental ages, but the framework for having clear goals and flexible options is consistent no matter the grade level or content So some key takeaways, just to recap it all, UDL focuses on providing multiple means of engagement, representation, and action and expression. UDL is a continuous practice rather than an end goal. We will never reach a perfect learning experience or a perfect classroom environment, but we can always strive and be aspirational, right? And I think UDL is a framework that allows us to do that. It is a proactive framework to support designing curriculum to the edges, right? So students who meet the average, exceed the average, or need support meeting the average. And I think that's another piece as well, because sometimes, we might have students in the classroom who, you know, they're, they're just excelling, they know it, you know? You might want to think of more challenging options for them to be able to engage in the material, you know? Or offering them extra work to work on, or stuff like that, right? So it's also thinking about how are we meeting on each of the edges, right? UDL supports all people, I'm sure we all know that, but just in case you thought it was just for folks with disabilities, it's actually for everyone. And then all of the resource and handouts can be used to inform, not your future lesson planning, but the teachers when I gave this to them. So this is, as I said, because I don't want to keep folks too long, but you do have two lesson plans in there. One of them, they're both a Eureka squared math lesson. And this is actually created by David Goldsmith alongside, oh, I'm forgetting her name right now, I'm sorry. But in a collaborative process with another person, they created this UDL lesson plan alongside this other lesson plan. And if you look through, I'm sure you'll see some, probably a lot of differences, and be able to queue into, oh, this is UDL in action. These are like, no wonder why we kind of want to use this, because it helps guide the lesson a bit more. It helps to ask more intentional questions, provide resources, and allow for students to engage in the lesson in a variety of ways. But with that, that is my UDL crash course. Does anyone have any questions?
Rachel, is it fair to say that UDL is derivative of all the work that special educators have done over the years? Because it really feels like you're taking the model from special ed and applying it to regular ed, meaning you're talking about the student, not the content. How does the student understand and get to the place where they're learning, which is something special educators have done well from the beginning of special ed? How do we make this lesson work for this child? Because we need to know what this child can do. And in the regular classroom, these techniques would just be enhancing other children's ability to learn. Is that a fair assessment?
Oh, absolutely. I would say that most special educators have been ahead of the curve. They, they've been aware of UDL for a while. And I would say that Catherine Ploard especially has been a real champion of UDL. And so I do think it's really embedded in a lot of special education, and we're trying to filter it out to, to more of the universal population. Yeah. Other questions?
That's interesting that it's, because I can see in a universal design classroom where one student is having trouble with something, and they see another student doing it a different way that clicks for them. So getting a practice that's being successfully used in special ed out to all of the classrooms is sort of the same thing. And I think that's really good.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that brings up a point of, I hear sometimes from kids especially who have IEPs, sometimes feel singled out in the classroom. Not that their teacher is doing that, but they feel like, oh, why, especially at younger ages, like, why do I have to do this differently? Or stuff like that, right? And when you think about the implementation of UDL and allowing for multiple ways to engage in a lesson, it kind of shields some of that, like, oh, I'm different than this other person, or why do I have to do that and the rest of the class doesn't, right? So it kind of allows for more of that variation.
So I don't have any questions in particular, but I really appreciate you bringing this forward to everybody. There's actually a really great TED Talk about designing for the edges that's out there that I can get it. But it's actually about designing fighter jets, and it's, it's right along those, those lines. Renee's shaking her head, she's seen it before. It's really, really good, and it makes you think about that designing for the edges in a different way. So it's, it's a really great piece. And the other thing, I know New Hampshire is part of the, through CAST, the National Accessible Educational Materials Program. So that's another area where there's a lot of resources for, for teachers and schools. And with New Hampshire being part of that state cohort, we have access to even more supports and technical assistance from CAST.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure Suzanne knows that. But I also, I, I really use a lot of the CAST resources, honestly, even to create this. Even one of your handouts is directly from CAST. They are a wealth of resources when it comes to universal design. Yeah, thank you.
Got a question, because I remember seeing this pop up somewhere else when I was looking at, I wish I could remember the source regarding UDL. But one of the things is when you start off the presentation of like how you'd be comfortable presenting something just so that you're knowledgeable. One of my questions would be, is that people have a tendency to go with what they're comfortable with. So if you end up being the most comfortable giving oral presentation, you're going to continue giving an oral presentation if you're given the choice. But the fact is that we all actually need to know how to write essays and speak in a big group or things like that. And so I was actually kind of wondering how UDL addresses that fact, and that we, there's a comfort level on what you're best at, but we have a tendency to stick with what we know.
Absolutely. So I have kind of two points to that. One of them is unfortunately, due to the nature of being a public education system, One of them is unfortunately, due to the nature of being a public education system, we are bound to certain tests, certain things that just all students need to know or pass in order to graduate or, you know, extend on to college, things of that nature. So that's not going to end unfortunately. And so one point is to think about UDL as just a tool to use in the classroom for some like lessons that you're able to, right? So you might not be able to do it with every single lesson, particularly the action and expression piece. You might have a lot of leeway with the representation and engagement, and the end product might still have to be the same. So that, that is something practical that we have to kind of internalize. And then secondly, though, I did, because this has been a common question from a lot of teachers and when I have given this presentation around like, well, how do we do UDL when people still need to learn how to write? They still need to learn how to present, things of that nature. The end product can still be the same in, in thinking about how can I offer variation in the steps leading up to that final product, right? So the, most students will still know, like, you're going to have to produce an essay, right? But if you're more comfortable talking, right? You might want to use talk to text first, and then let's look at that, let's work and edit this together, things of that nature, right? So it's kind of, how can we use those strengths to help you reach that final goal? If that makes sense.
Yeah, I think of scaffolding, which is, you know, kind of similar type of thing. And I will say, you know, looking back at the teachers that my son had, a lot of teachers here already do a lot of this work.
Oh, absolutely.
And absolutely, you know, I know that he had fabulous teachers that were very much aware, you know, of how they were presenting information. Maybe it wasn't called this, because we tend to use new lingo as years go on or what have you, but, so I think it's great. But again, there's always, there's always room to, you know, to grow and to kind of think about different ways of reaching. Because again, what's our, our, our mission to, and our vision, you know, to engage every learner, so.
Absolutely. Yeah. As I said, our teachers already utilize a lot of these things unknowingly or knowingly, and they just might have never known, like, oh, I'm doing UDL, right? Like, they just thought, like, I'm being a good teacher. So, you know, I think that's been helpful as well, because I, I never want our teachers to feel like, oh, this is another thing we're putting on you to like, have to deliver. And thinking about, well, actually, how can we help you to recognize, like, you're doing this in many different ways, and how can we expand on that?
I would just add, because I think it's such an important point, UDL is not about changing the competencies or the standards. So if the, if the expectation is a five paragraph essay, it is about how do you design lessons so students can write a five paragraph essay? And how do you design the lesson for the neediest student in your classroom? Because if you instruct to the student with the greatest needs in your classroom, everyone else can access that curriculum as well. And that's why the ramp is such a great example, with the janitor shoveling off the stairs and the kid in the wheelchair waiting, and the kid in the wheelchair said, if you shovel off the ramp, we could all get in. But if you shove off the stairs, only the people who can do the stairs can do it. So that's, I think, such an important distinction, because it's not changing our, our standards. It's, it's the process of designing lessons so that everyone can access those standards. And I just thought that was an important point to reiterate that you made.
Yeah. And I think also to just note on that real quick, to expand, we're not changing what we're assessing, right? So Heather got a chance to come to our PD day where we did invite someone from Novak Education, and they specialize in talking and teaching about UDL. And so Murco Chardon came in and gave a talk to everyone and told part of his story and stuff like that. And then he had some breakout sessions afterwards. And I think a key piece is we're, we're still always going to have to assess certain things, right? But depending on what we're assessing, we might have a bit more leeway or ability to leverage different resources or different teaching tactics and strategies and stuff like that. And it really does depend on what does that competency or standard say? So if it says, write a five-page essay, the end product you are assessing, they're going to have to write a five-page essay, right? But if it's like, examine historical resources, right? That word examine can be a lot broader, right? So it also depends on what, what do these standards say? And how can we adapt them? What, what are we assessing in all those pieces? So it's really like, what are we assessing and how can we get there?
Since you brought up Murco, one of the things that he said that I wrote and highlighted like three times is, UDL gives students voice and choice. And that gives them the, or helps overcome implicit bias in the design of lessons as well, which I thought was a really interesting thought and a really good outcome.
Yeah. Yeah. And especially, he specializes in kind of, how does UDL and equity, how do they combine? I would say UDL by nature is an equitable framework, but he really thinks about like, how does this promote equity in the classroom for all students?
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll send you a copy of the PowerPoint. Awesome. Thank you.
I think this like folds in seamlessly with engage every learner, so it's, it's very exciting. All right. Now the superintendent's report.
Sure. So it looks pretty brief, but I thought I would just take a few seconds to talk about. The one question I get asked a lot in these last two months is, you know, what is the secret sauce of Oyster River? So I'm going to just take a few minutes and tell you what I think it is. First of all, you've got three communities that are incredibly supportive of public education. That does not happen everywhere. And the three communities being Lee, Madbury, and Durham, and then at the high school, we bring in Barrington, who are equally supportive of the work we're doing. I think one of the things that I would add also is that you're surrounded by so many people who are incredibly smart. It's an incredibly bright community. They'll offer their thoughts and their, their ideas to whatever it is you're talking about. I think about the work that we did on communication, and we had people from all over the district working on a committee to see how we could improve our communication process. It's an excellent example of being, of listening. And I think that's the other part that makes Oyster River so dynamic is we actively listen to our constituents. And in doing all of that, we never lose sight of everything we do is about our students. So for 12 years, every goal we've had, whether it's this facility, was it transportation upgrades, food service upgrades, academic work, it's always been with a student goal in sight. We've never had a goal that talked about the business of business. We've had a goal about how does the business department support instruction, how to support students? So, you know, that is something that I think has resonated with the communities. You've never been afraid of gathering comments, so you have a goal and outcome that you hope to achieve. And you might go into that conversation with a very fixed idea of how you'd achieve it. And by the time you've listened to the constituency, you have pivoted to not, you haven't pivoted the outcome, you've pivoted in how you want to get to the outcome. And the outcome may be just as student-centered, but may be quite different than where you started the conversation in the beginning. So respect. Respect for who lives in our district, respect for the communities, respect for our staff. And one of the things I think that makes this district a hallmark district is respect for our student voice. That has been an amazing contribution that I think has transformed discussions here. The example I would use that Denise and Brian went through was during COVID, and our student rep, Megan, at the time, who completely transformed the adult conversation, because we were all willing to hear what a student had to say, what their experience was. Yes, we collect data, but it's not to collect data. It's to affirm, redirect, or, or move our district forward. It's not about the arbitrary nature of, oh, here's a whole bunch of data, yay, we've collected it. What does, what does it mean? How does it, how does it influence the decision we've made about students? I think respecting everyone is a hallmark of this board, this, in this community. Yes, we've had some people who came here at the podium who are disrespectful, but at no point did this board react disrespectfully. And I think that takes a lot of patience and a lot of swallowing what, what you're listening to. But that person who's speaking at the podium, who's putting out an opinion that is not necessarily supportive of the school system or the children, has every right to be there and say it and to respect that. I think ultimately, what this board and what this school system has done is appreciated each other. You've appreciated the work of the former boards, you've appreciated the work of the administrators, the teachers, the support staff, you've appreciated the work of our students. And, you know, what makes Oyster River, Oyster River is all of those things. And my sincere hope is as you move forward into the future, you never lose that, those key components. Everything is about the kids, regardless of what we're doing. How does it improve the life of a child? That's what all the adults are here for. There's no other reason for them to be here. And so as you work on your next strategic plan, just remember every dollar, every piece of data, every outcome is about what we're doing for kids. And so I, I thought I would add that tonight, Matt. I also just, now going back onto class size enrollments and getting off my podium, I would say, thanks to the board creating the kindergarten position and the third grade position, as we needed them this spring. The elementary class sizes are looking phenomenal. I mean, these are really great. They're probably the best class sizes we've seen ever. Does that mean that they aren't growing? No, they're growing. The kids are creeping in, even as they, they will for the next couple of months. But if you look at these elementary class, class sizes, you have every right to be proud of them. You've stayed true to your own policy, and this is a good example of being student-centered, right? Some school boards would say, oh, we didn't budget for a kindergarten position, we didn't budget for a third grade position. So they wouldn't have put them in, and the classes would have been oversized. Here you have, I'm a good example of this body doing things that are right for kids. The middle school numbers are just as we anticipated they would be, there's no surprises there. And the high school numbers are the same. So as we end this school year and going into the summer, and things will change over the summer, the enrollment data right now is strong for our kids and for our teachers. So thank you for adding those two positions when we were talking about them. That's my report for tonight. Mr. Bacon.
The last one, and it was good. Thank you very much. Oh, go ahead, Heather.
How are we doing on unfilled positions? Are we pretty well-staffed for next year? Are we still working?
We are down to one LPN nurse position, and that's it. We have hired and hired and hired and hired. We've hired great people. We've hired senior people, young people, experienced people. I'm really super excited for the people. We had just hired somebody today that will do a great work at the high school and, in fact, in the special ed world, should be, he'll be the associate director for the high school. And he's coming in from Allenstown, and I think he's going to do a crackerjack job for us. We hired the mental health counselor, we hired a BCBA, is that right, Renee? Did I get, that was in national, right? And so those are both incredibly difficult positions to fill. So we're in great shape. You know, I want to really give credit to the administrators who are going through the screening process, because I get to see them in the end. And they have all done a really, really great job. So we're in good shape.
How about paras and drivers and the other auxiliary bits?
So always a moving target. Paraeducators, they come and they go, so you won't really know where you're at until probably midsummer in terms of who's decided to move on and, and who we brought on. Bus drivers, we ended the year in really good shape. We had all but one position filled. That's the best we've been since COVID. Again, we'll have to see how we open the school year, but ending the school year, we ended up pretty well. Cooks, we're in good shape. Same. Facilities, technology, we've, we're all in, all of those departments are in good shape as we enter the summer. So Dr. Shapps will be able to concentrate on his transition and not spending enormous amount of time hiring.
Okay, business administrator.
Okay, so in your packet, you have the financial report as of June 12th, and you'll notice that the estimated fund balance for the operating budget is $553,595, so just under 2% of the fund balance is left over. In that balance, in the expenses, we've been able to do the final payroll of the year. We've done the summer pays for the teachers. We've done the sick and vacation buyouts for those people that are retiring and including the retirement incentive. So that's really huge that we've been able to get everything into this fiscal year, which is appropriate. All those are this year's expenses, so it's nice that we can get them in there. We do have two warrant articles that we have to fund. We have fund balance warrant articles totaling $250,000. So that will bring the estimated fund balance to go back to offset taxes of about $300,000. And we had estimated $500,000. So I think that's really good to set us up for a really good place to start next year, just in case anything comes up, anything with facilities, anything with no harem or massway, we're prepared to be able to take care of that financially.
Any questions? Right?
The, the number you have here obviously won't be exact until the audit, just wanted everyone to know that it will fluctuate, you know, as time goes, but probably not a lot, right?
We don't expect it to be that much. We're doing some cleanup right now, but it's all, we have a few encumbrances, but we've been going over that with Catherine. She's really my last person to have purchase orders out there, and we've gotten it right down to the invoices that she expects to get this month. So I expect a few changes, but nothing material.
All right. Excellent. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. The student representative is not here this evening. Finance committee? No report. We'll move on to the unanimous consent agenda. I will make a motion, I'm sorry, does anyone have anyone, anything out of the unanimous consent they'd like to pull out and discuss? Okay. I'm going to make a motion to approve the unanimous consent agenda, including the affirmation of hiring listed positions for the 2024, 2025 school year. And for first read, for policies DAF.
It's, oh.
Oh, second read, I apologize, yep. For policies DAF, DKC, DKF, and DKC, and for deletion of policy D, DA, D1, D2, D4, and D5. Can I have a second, Denise?
Second.
All in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. All right. Discussion items, the NHSBA 2024 resolutions. Gianna, do you want to speak? I'm not, or Jim, I'm not sure who was planning to speak on that.
I wasn't going to. I thought it'd be you, Gianna.
I can, I have some basic ideas, but I know that Heather had wanted to talk to me about this earlier, so I don't know if she has something off of, off of her head, top of her head that she wanted to discuss first.
No, I don't. I'm happy to let you carry the football.
Well, so I was looking through the policies that are extant, and I have some ideas of where we want to go if we chose to do a resolution. And this is based upon the state of some of the policies, and then of course, some of the legislation that has come through. One of the things is that some of the policies, some laws have not actually yet been signed by students, so some of them, I actually don't know where we're going to be. Hopefully, we'll know relatively quickly to be able to have an action plan, and we have a little bit of time until July. One of the ones I was looking at was, they have a policy, it's 2E, and it currently says, NHSBA proposes that state develop an equitable and sustainable tax plan dedicated solely to education for the purpose of fully funding a constitutionally adequate education for all students in the state. I thought there might be an interesting amendment there to say, NHSBA proposes that state develop an equitable and sustainable tax plan dedicated solely to public education for the purpose. And the reason why I was thinking about that one is because, of course, we keep on having voucher bills that show up that suck money out of public education and give it to private and religious education. And so specifying public education might be a way of addressing that. So that's idea one, and I'm So that's idea one, and I'm getting bobbing, so that might be one way to go. Another one that goes in line with that regarding funding is a current policy they have that's 2J, and it's, NHSBA poses any constitutional amendment that vacates the spirit and intent to the Claremont and Londonderry lawsuits and attempts in any way to limit or reject direct funding in a manner that is contrary to the New Hampshire Supreme Court's ruling and present interpretation of the New Hampshire Constitution. Well, that would be amended to include CONVAL, because now we're just keeping adding lawsuits that, you know, keep on addressing that fact. So that would alter it just for being updated to the current state of being. So that's another choice. One that I haven't quite worked around yet, but I was seeing something, this was for policy 2P, and this was, NHSBA supports amending New Hampshire's special education statute so that only the state legislature, not the state Board of Education, Education via rulemaking or any other process, decides when it's appropriate for state law to exceed federal law. I was looking at that one, even though it doesn't quite get the federal law thing, it's more along the state law, because of course, we're still having the ongoing discussion regarding the 306 regulations. And I have read several articles that have argued that the proposed 306 regulations are possibly unconstitutional, because they're changing education fundamentally in a way that is actually not done through the legislature, it's being done through the Board of Education. So that's what I think I'd have to play around with, and I'd have to have somebody think about if we want to try and address the 306 regulations. I've stated more than once to the board that I have issues regarding the 306 regulations, language changing from shall to may, and then things like that, and teacher certifications. So I'm not sure quite how we could address that one, but that one's, I've been playing around with in my mind, if other people have ideas. That one is challenging. Based upon, I had some challenging regarding like, the HB2 last time, you would have to be pretty careful about what we would say, which actually, in a way, is great, because like, the resolution that we had last year has been, it being ruled unconstitutional, the divisive concepts thing is extremely helpful. But I think that resolution, you might have seen it in the, if you looked at the policies before, it's still up for being reaffirmed, and I, I will push for people to reaffirm it, because I, I'm not convinced it's dead. So I would like to make sure that goes forward. And then like, the fifth one, well, I guess four would be kind of combining the 306 regulation issue, would be, there's current bills that have not been signed by Sununu, and I honestly do not know how he'll go. And that would be HB 1205, which requires schools to designate teams by sex and prevents in their own language biological males from participating in women's sports teams. And it also provides a legal option for students against the school if they're forced to compete against trans athletes. And then HB 1312, which forces teachers to give a two-week warning regarding anything, in quotes, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, or gender expression, that somebody could be ruling this as objectionable. It also says that most, must make course materials available on request. We kind of did that anyway, so, but, and then, of course, it's the one that kind of is the, is kind of a reiteration in a different way of forced outing. The reason this gets complicated is, I checked this, is that we have a school board policy that was written a few years ago, and was the model for other school districts, which was JBAB, which was our trans and non-binary student policy. And I thought that perhaps we'd be able to kind of have a model of the beginning language that's in that policy to make it an NHSBA policy. And then I ran into something interesting. The JBAB policy has been removed as recommended from the NHSBA site. So it's not there. So I mean, it's, it's been taken down, and I can't tell the date. I don't know if it was 2022, I don't remember catching it. So that one is something to watch. Maybe we'll see something, because the thing is, is that I can inquire, because it even said, if you have inquiries, ask. I can inquire and say, why'd you poof JBAB? Because I didn't know about that, and that was a huge push by this district to have that. And to me, that would be a model in the fact that, I think, no matter what happens with those bills, that we should reaffirm, and the NHSBA should reaffirm that we support all students regardless of gender expression and identity. So that's writing it that way. So I can write all this up and see where you guys go. The biggest one is, is trying to track the, the one I just mentioned, and then trying to find a way of addressing the 306 regulations as an NHSBA policy. The other two, I saw people bobbing about just a couple word changes, so I can write those, I have them written up here, but I can, I just wanted to speak them out to see what people were thinking.
Gianna, what's the deadline that you have to get?
I have, well, the biggest thing is, is where our deadline is to be able to have this written up to be able to vote on it, is the July 20th meeting, because the deadline is August 2nd, so of course, that hits where we're trying to make sure for it. So that's, that's with me running around and, and looking at and thinking about current events. Does anybody else have anything that popped into their mind that they found important that I missed?
I guess my only question is, do we prioritize which ones we want to put forward? Because I agree, I'm not disagreeing with any of the ones that you talked about, but I just wonder, you know, putting forward, I mean, it sounds, I mean, and I understand two of them are very minor word changes, so that's not really doing a lot, but, you know, if we're looking at three or four, is that like, too, I don't know, is that too many for one district to try and put forward?
No, other people did the same. Other people did the same, but what I can tell you is the one that was nice, the complicated one regarding the laws that we don't know if they're being, being passed or not. I do know that at least one other school district has put, is putting forward a resolution regarding the trans and binary policy. I'll be getting a copy of that later from peoples that I know, and we'll see what that looks like, because then simply would be us supporting it. So it could be coming from another district. So some of their folks are looking at the same thing. So that would be one that we could conceivably take off, off of our plate, and then be focused on the others. The one that I'm particularly looking at is the 306 regulations, because in a way, they've, they kind of tabled it, but not really. And I think, you know, there's been a lot of voice from multiple groups, the superintendents, the school board associations, teachers, I mean, just lots of people having issues with it, that, and one of the solutions, actually, people have stated, is actually just to reaffirm the ones from 10 years ago, because it's so messy. But I think it'd be great if we actually had a resolution on it. The difficulty there is the wording and the method of attack on that one. So I, I did totally hear you. Yeah. But the other two is also trying to get that way towards the, the voucher thing, because that's a major thing for us, because that's funding. And the, the one that radically expanded did get defeated, but it's not, it, it will come back. And I don't want us to be in a situation like Arizona and Ohio, where they're in massive debt because they can't pay for public education, because how much got sucked out by vouchers? And I want to make it very clear that we're, we're not okay with that.
Gianna, I just want to remind everyone that over the years, we were the ones that were putting in the gun resolution regarding no guns on school property, and it failed, and it failed, and then finally, it passed, and it actually passed because we entered into partnerships with like-minded districts. There are like-minded districts on the trans bills as well, so I think multiple, not singular, but multiple districts supporting a particular resolution gives it more power at the assembly. My guess is the reason the trans piece was pulled is because the district, the state is so pulled. And so having advocates for that at the state, at the, at the assembly is really, really important, so I applaud you on the ones you chose.
And what I can say is that I, at that meeting, I did manage to make a pass with myself a little bit, and did create a network of people that were more along lines of, of like-minded folks. So the thing is, is anything we come up with, we'll be able to have support on the floor.
Okay? So if you are gonna have something for us to read at the July 17th meeting, can you have that to Wendy, I would say probably the 8th or 9th of July? That will give her time to get it in. And, and if anyone has... Your microphone's not on.
I turned it off rather than on. So I'll reiterate that if anybody else wanted to try and do this kind of wordsmithing or had ideas regarding the 306 regulation piece, I'm obviously absolutely welcome to it, but I also can crack at it on my own. But if somebody has ideas, chuck them my way.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate all your work on this. Are there any school board committee updates? Oh, yeah, Denise, I'm sorry.
Policy committee met last week, so Kelly, Renee, and I, and we have some policies that were not put forward tonight because of the timing, but they will be put forward to the board in, at the July meeting. And then, policy committee does not meet again until September.
Excellent. Any other committee updates? Okay. Is anyone here for public comment? No one here for public comment. All right. Closing actions, as we look at these future meeting dates, you can take the July 2nd manifest review meeting off, that, that manifest will not be ready for those on the manifest review committee, and I believe that you are coordinating with Amy to, to get that taken care of. Excellent. Our next meeting date will be the 3rd Wednesday in July, the 2nd, the 1st Wednesday in July is during the 4th of July week. We will not be meeting that week. The, that will be a regular meeting, but curtailed and followed by a workshop with Dr. Shapps, that will be his first meeting. And that's, is that, there's no non-public this meeting?
I just have a question about that, Matt.
Absolutely, yes, please.
So is the regular meeting in here, and then we move for the workshop?
No, I, I'm not sure why it says the conference room, but my guess is we'll be in here for the whole thing.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. With that said, I am going to hand the meeting over to Dr. James Morse.
Thank you. So annually, I've always opened one meeting a, a year. It's the one where we elect officers, but in my entire career, I've never closed a meeting, so I call for a adjournment. Second? There we go. There you go, Mr. Chair, you have a motion on the table. Call for a vote. All those in favor of going home? For me, forever. Seven to zero. Thank you very much. Thank you, Matt. That was very generous. You're a classy guy. Thank you.